Okay.
Shut it off?
You know what I'm saying?
You want a list?
Yeah.
We go ahead and call this public hearing to order transfer of liquor license Kevin Tate Shoreline. Is there any places or concerns from the floor?
Mr. Mayor, it says on this application that the license term is from three twenty-three twenty-one to eight twenty-six twenty-one. What happens on eight twenty?
It has to be renewed.
This is a very short term renewal?
No, that's because it's being transferred and probably just about the middle of the...
This is just being transferred?
So this is the end, at the end of the, of the eight twenty-six twenty-one have to be renewed again?
That's when everybody pays.
All, all the licenses have to be renewed.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you have anything you want to say? Okay. There's no comments from the audience. Didn't see anything on the phone about it. Uh, we'll close this public hearing. And everybody would rise and say the pledge of allegiance with you, we'll start the council meeting.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, ladies and gentlemen. Under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions? Uh, we will move on to is there a motion for approval of minutes on March eighth?
Sorry, Bruce, sorry to interrupt you. I'd like to make a motion to add a executive session about ongoing litigation personnel.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries, we will go to executive session, but just before the end of the meeting then. Okay, is there a motion for approval of minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, councilman?
I move we approve the minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries. Reports, councilman.
Uh, not much, we had another GDC, uh, meeting, was kind of a skeleton crew, still moving forward with website right now.
Okay. Councilwoman, none.
I have nothing.
Councilman Kincaid?
Um, just wanted to commend the crews, I know they're working hard on that, the snowstorm and the streets and I know they're doing a good job, I just wanted to... Want you to pass that on. Um, I know we can't please everybody and we're all armchair quarterbacks on how things ought to be done and also on the trash and stuff, so... Guys are working hard, well done, well done.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Councilwoman, none.
I have three reports, Mr. Mayor, before I, one of his five pages long.
What?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Uh, before I begin these, I would like to thank Randy and his crew for removing our snow. That's quite a mountain range you built out there Randy, are you going to name it?
Well, right now it's a swamp.
It's a swamp, that's, that's, that's Mount Swamp out there.
Yeah.
Don't split the name. Thank you. Uh, the first one concerns Glen Rock area waste disposal district. The Glen Rock Waste Disposal District held their monthly meeting, March eighteenth, at the library. We have a new cost figure for closing and sealing cells one and two, two point six million dollars. When these cells are closed and sealed, the area will be fenced and become a bunny rabbit paradise. As any other use of this area will be extremely restricted by DEQ rules. An environmental contractor will have to be hired to complete the project, which will also include years of monitoring. Recycling was discussed again, this is a complex issue as it has two phases. The actual recycling process, then creating a market to purchase and use this product. These meetings are open to the public, held at the library every third Tuesday of each month at five thirty. And do address an issue that affects every resident in Glen Rock, waste disposal. During your questions, come to a meeting. John Maines is the chairman, Ardi Schubert, the secretary treasurer, Steve Cooper, Kathy Weinstaff, and myself complete the board. I am quite new at this, but we have people with extensive knowledge about waste disposal issues. Number two. Glen Rock Senior Center food program. I would like to refresh the community on a valuable service offered, offered by the Glen Rock Senior Center. Meals are served from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM, Monday through Friday. These meals are available to seniors for five dollars and to guests for ten dollars. Home delivery is available to seniors sixty-plus by filling out paperwork at the senior center. The food service at the senior center also offers frozen meals for two dollars and fifty cents. Stop by during office hours, pick out what you want and how many you would like. The menus are approved by a certified dietitian, taking into consideration such components as sodium content, starch, protein, fruits and vegetables. Dana works to introduce two to three new menus monthly and to incorporate chicken, beef, and pork into her meals. She learned to cook from her mother and is continuing developing her art of preparing and serving food. Some of the meals in March included such things as pot ham and Swiss sandwich, nacho bar, chicken bacon ranch wraps, orange chicken rice, mushroom gravy pork chops, barbecue beef sliders, balsami chicken, and a taco bar. Support this program, enjoy some good eating at home or at the center. A valuable resource for our community and I appreciate very much what Dana does up there to put out good and tasty meals for us. Number three.
Took them all over?
Yes, sir. I thought I was going to have to give brief pace to carry it, but I didn't manage it in full. Thank you. This, my third report is entitled Administrative Leave of the Chief of Police. This is a very sensitive issue. According to the Wyoming open meal, uh, meeting laws, an executive session not open to the public may be held, as John has called it. This specifically says to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employed professional purpose or officer unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hea- hearing. Therefore, I know that John has already requested an executive session, but I think that this matter should be discussed. Before, I would like to have, before this report is read, I would like to have the council to, uh, hear this report in a, in a private session. To give them an opportunity to express any, uh, objections they have to the report before it becomes public knowledge. All council members should be a report, be aware of this information. This is the only issue that I have a request and executive session for, and I would request it before this report is read for the protection of council members. It'll be a very short one, the only purpose is to read this report and offer council members a chance to, uh, have anything removed that they do not feel is appropriate. Therefore, I request you tend to executive session for that purpose at this time.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second, any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed by nay? Motion carries, we will get to the second session, we'll be right back.
Motion second.
Move second. She, she in the motion. Margaret. Move second. I don't see how they're gonna close that door.
They're gonna.
Yeah, man. What the night or something we're gonna do a quick one?
I'm still, I'm starting to get when we have a shortage in.
Yeah. You know I should have.
Uh?
I knew I should have had a drink before.
I do. They had dinner at work?
I haven't even eaten yet.
Actually brought you some, it turned out really good, it makes spaghetti pie? Cause we got spaghetti the other night, so we took the noodles, they had the sauce and meat in it. Made a layer, then you made a cheese layer. And then you topped it with marinara with hamburger in it.
Hmm.
And then you put carbs on it on the top. Oh, and a black olive juice, there's some more.
Yeah, no, my wife decided she had to have a zoom the night they get deep for it.
You didn't have a zoom?
Zoom me.
What?
Q L I request, yeah. This is a bunch of parents and families getting together to ditch about you. I did it one night. It's not doing anything. I said, oh, these guys playing and this and that.
Well, those guys were nothing at all to us. Being a functional adult every day seems a bit excessive.
Gary Malt. We hear you.
You know, I don't hate procs you.
You know, we're. Make sure this one here. Shrimp. It's. And they just take the, get the shell, but essentially they get you down through the road. They lock it on there. They move the volume up. So it looks very nice here. Much gosh. Sixty two years since I've been wearing this jacket. You know, we're. I can hear. I'm really like a rock. Now, that's my, my. Okay, you know. Yeah. It's. The. That's for. Kind of gets you that. Hello, let's see if you know how to back some of those layers here. So with a thousand three string layer of this, this is the one. It's a high one, it's just a section. Two, everyone knows. All, all of those are going to go in corner. Carbs suck.
Probably gonna stay.
It's a lot nicer out here.
I think it was Bruce.
I'll be right back.
Oh. Yeah.
Is there a motion to call that executive session to a close?
Um, I'll make a motion, we end the executive session.
I'll second.
I'll second that one.
Moved in second, any discussion? And I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? Motion carries.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Court Number Three is still in, uh, in my life and, uh, hopefully will not have to be publicly presented, but I will not hesitate to do so if we get to a point where it is appropriate.
Thank you. Moving on with reports. Clerk Tammy.
Um, I just wanted to announce that, um, we're still waiting for allocation requests, those are due by the ninth. And then the Corbly Scholarship is available again this year and, um, the application can be found on the website under public notices. And those are due by the sixteenth of April. That's all I have.
Kelly, treasure.
I have nothing at this time.
Randy, public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, crew's been busy with snow, snow plowing and removal, trying to collect garbage. Fixed water leak on Miller Lane that was hit by a private backhoe and ripped out of the ground, uh, during the storm, of course. And before the storm, we did some meter upgrades, street sweeping, sewer wash, equipment, uh, fueling and maintenance and getting ready for the storm coming. I have two thank yous, I'd like to thank, uh, Andrea and Hunt for supplying trucks and our motor and getting here real quick to help us pick up the snow, uh, having those big trucks really helped us out. And the other one was Short Power with their Snow Cat getting us out to the wells, cause we lost the wells and we couldn't get out there, there was ten foot drifts. They got us out there and we got them fixed and running. Thank them.
Yes, I'm working pretty hard out there too. We thought it would be best that we still had water.
Be good.
Scott, building.
Um, I finished, uh, two credit courses in my ICC. Uh, one with the IRC, the other one being, being. Building Department and for next has been, we got nine new for next and they're all, there's really much to get, it's still in, cause we haven't seen a lot of them done. Of course, we're all moving as a group for next. Coming up, uh, quick, just, uh, I think I have to get up to ask you, we know anything to, uh, make sure that we're, uh, there's a lot, it's just, you know, it's, uh, probably.
Jared, Ikey.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, spent the past couple of weeks getting the surfaces set up for you guys there and got most everybody set up and running. Um, but I'm also demoing some cybersecurity equipment, uh, for the town to see if we want to add it into the budget next year, um, it's a company called Darktrace and it's a, an appliance that is, that monitors the network and actually makes proactive, um, decisions to shut down, uh, threat actors and stuff like that, it's pretty impressive. Uh, the county's already running it and Douglas is running it, um, and so I've seen it kind of working there for a second, and so I've got a demo appliance showing up this week and we'll get to run that for a few weeks and see if that's something we want to continue using, um, going into the next budget year, and that's about it for me.
Come to the podium and state your name. Fire Department.
Fire Department, Council, Mayor, thanks for, uh, having us. Randy, thank you guys for, uh, clearing us out and helping the other night when we had the misfortune of turning down one of the side streets and it wasn't real conducive for a fire truck, so. I don't have a lot of ground clearance, we'll just say it like that. Uh, Sean apologizes for not being here, he's gone, uh, on vacation this week, so I'm here, uh. Budgets, Tammy, did I understand you that you need them?
By the ninth.
Of April, okay, so before our next F S A. Okay, I'll get you that, um, the trucks that we've been working on through State Forestry, we finally did get the, the trucks bought, uh, so we'll give you the update on that. We have two five tons instead of the two and a halves that we were looking at, they wouldn't come off of them down there in Cheyenne, so we got two of the five tons, so we'll make a rural pumper, if you will, out of one of them, and then the other one will get set up for replacing one of our old grass trucks that, uh, has had some issues over the year. And the other thing I wanted to ask the Council is, uh, fourth of July this year, if you guys would be so gracious as to, uh, give us the use of South Rec for fireworks, I think forced on a Sunday, so probably look at doing two days, Saturday, Sunday out there for, for the, uh, fireworks, last year we had the council because of all the restrictions, but hopefully this year we're living right, so.
Well, right now I don't see a problem with the third and fourth of July unless we, with the State Fourth County Fire Ward decides things get too dry and we have to put on fire ban.
Exactly. And just wanted to heads, give you guys a heads up in advance, so the second we weren't coming in and saying, hey, uh, is this okay, so.
Is there anything, is there anything on the books? Something on the books that, I was just wondering if someone. Well, that's just normal, that's normally on the deal, but we, we understand that and we, these guys norm, we usually give Jimmy a time that he needs to be done, the ropings need to be done, so fireworks displaced.
Yeah, we, we've worked pretty good with them in the past and once that time hits, then we get buck and stock rodeo if nothing else, so. Nah, we, we can work around that, so, but that's all I got right now, any questions on anything down there? For me.
Jeff, I wanted to say I met with, uh, John Bean.
Uh huh.
It was nice to get to walk through there and know what days, I really had to get open right away for you.
Yeah.
So that helped me a lot too.
That, that night, uh, I think it was April and I don't know the feller's name that was running the backhoe, but I got stuck in my pickup just trying to get in there, it was blown in pretty good and, uh, then I just got to go up and watch when they got the truck stuck, so that was even better, cause I wasn't involved in that, so, but yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks, Jeff. If that's end of reports, uh, we'll move on to items from the floor, are there any items from the floor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, my name is Christie Grant and I wanted to come and talk to you because the Chamber is partnering with a new local company called Spools R Us and two of the owners, um, Evan Casey and Paul Gudel are here and their company takes used spools that are from either the oil field or the wind farms, you know, the great big wire spools, and they repurpose them into benches and tables and chairs. And so what the, um, Chamber wants to do with this company is have benches sponsored that can then be placed down in the new Town Square Park along the extension of the walking path, if there needs to be additional seating or benches down in the additional, or in the original town park. And if a business wants to have them in front of their own business, have them placed there. And so I had spoken with Randy and Randy's also on the Chamber Board, I'd spoken with Bruce about it, um, and they, there seems to be space available and um, also the plaques that will go on the benches that say in memory of or donated by a business or a family or a ranch will be done out here at McGinley Manufacturing. So the entire project will be local, um, it allows us to repurpose things that would normally just go to landfill, so, and make, you know, a repurposed item. It also speaks to the industries that have, um, been the, the base of what our, um, what our economy is, so I think it kind of marries a lot of elements together. I wanted to just come and speak to the entire Council and ask for your blessing in the project and that as we go forward, um, we, we're gonna work with Randy, uh, and the town, uh, crew to get those placed in a more permanent type of way, because even though they weigh a hundred and fifty pounds, you know, teenage boys will be teenage boys, so. Um, I just wanted to come and talk to you about that, make you aware of it and see if you have any questions for the three of us while we're here.
Uh, we used them out at, at Hogfest, you brought some out, they were. Yeah, the spools, they were, they're excellent for tables and stuff, they really did come in handy for. I know, I know, they were just raw, but they, they served the purpose, so, yeah, I think it's an awesome idea.
Margaret.
Uh, you mentioned that, uh, you wanted to have people sponsor these benches?
Yes, ma'am.
How do people go about sponsoring a bench, what is the cost?
The cost is three hundred dollars for the bench and that includes the plaque and that includes any customization. For instance, if a local rancher wants to have their brand wood burned into the bench prior to the final, uh, coating being put on it, they can. If they want to have a logo from their business, they can, they have, um, horseshoes and types of ornaments that they put on the benches. And so then the Chamber will advertise and secure the sponsorships and handle that piece of it, hand the orders off to the guys and then, um, I will get the plaques from McGinley, they'll attach them and we're looking at a timeframe of June, June-ish for the walking path. And what'd you tell me, Randy, late August for the completion of the park?
A little bit closer to November.
Yeah, the way things are going right now.
All right then, we just stretched our timeline, boys.
Give you a little more time.
Right.
And now the, the three hundred dollars that goes to, uh, uh, the cost of the bench?
Yes, it gets split, it's not a fundraising opportunity for the Chamber, the Chamber basically is just creating the pass through and, um, seeking the sponsorships. And the cost will go to the guys for building it to Spools R Us, the company, and it'll also go to McGinley for the cost of the plaque. So it's pretty much just a in and out for the Chamber.
Sounds good.
Will we not putting exercise equipment periodically on the bike path?
Uh huh, yeah.
Is this not getting, just plenty of room for both?
Well, I'm thinking park, we can put a few down there, um, might be a spot, one or two along the walking path and get put in there.
Okay.
If you want to see one, there's one over at Harper Hanks, they're really cool.
Yeah.
No, that's very nice. A nice recycling effort, saving the garbage with the dump, thank you.
So. Do, does anyone have any opposition to us moving forward with the project? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, Deanna Bradshaw, I just wanted to give you a quick, um, tourism update and, um, just share a little bit. Um, over the last weekend, we had Glen Rock Bowling Alley, um, hosted their Kings and Queens Bowling Tournament in the middle of our snowstorm. And, um, we had over two hundred people that came and either participated or came and, um, showed those, their support to the bowlers that were there. Um, I just want to give a huge shout out, Gary and his team did an amazing job in taking care of, um, creating an amazing event. It was over thirty thousand dollars that went in there in prizes, donations, rewards back, I mean, that's a huge amount for Glen Rock and our little, um, bowling alley. Um, huge shout out to Christie and the Shoreliner, Kevin, they did over and above, um, we ran out of food, the grocery store was closed, we had about thirty-five people that were. We ran out of food, the grocery store was closed, we had about 35 people that were misplaced that we had to find places, we didn't, all of our hotels were completely booked up, and our bowling families put those people in their homes so that they could have somewhere to stay, and the Shoreliner gave us dinner that night at nine o'clock at night, and then the next morning they got up super early and fed all of our people that didn't have anywhere to eat. They stayed till about, some of them stayed till Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning, before they could get to where they needed to go. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to the community for everybody stepping up and really helping with, you know, it was just a bowling tournament, but it ended up being so much more, and we got to show our love, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other items from the floor?
Good evening, Council, I'm David Thiel. Earlier, Councilmember Nun alluded to Wyoming Statute 164405 on executive sessions, says a governing body of an agency may hold executive sessions not open to the public. Item two under that says to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. Therefore, I request that if the Council consider an executive session to hear complaints or charges against me, I request that it be a public hearing. Thank you.
Moving on, any other items from the floor? Move on to new business, first order of new business is liquor license transfer application for Kevin Tate, Shoreliner.
Motion, we approve the liquor license transfer?
Motion is her second.
I'll second that motion.
It moved in second, is there any discussion? During no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. That was painless, wasn't it? Next item on new business is Rocky Mountain Power Presentation.
Yeah, we have several of our folks have joined us this evening from various parts of our region, and we're close to being kicking off, so thank you. So Mayor and members of Council, while Shane, many of you know, our regional business manager helps us out with the technology and getting us up, we'll introduce ourselves and introduce some of the folks that are joining us on the phone, and some of our team members that are with you this evening. So my name is Sharon Fane, I'm Rocky Mountain Power's Vice President for Wyoming, I'm based in Cheyenne, and have been with the company for two years. And with us today, in the room is Jim Bowlinger, our Managing Director at the Dave Johnston Plant, many of you know Jim. Also joining us is Alan Dukin, he's our Manager of Engineering and Environmental at Dave Johnston, we're glad he's here with us. We also have Lane Anderson, who is our Operations Manager for all of our wind investments here in Wyoming, and he is a Rolling Hills resident. And then also with us is Tiffany Erickson, she's our Communications Director based out of Salt Lake. And we're glad that Jim and Alan can be with us this evening, because if you do have any technical questions, or questions specific to Dave Johnston Power Plant, or any of our workforce there, or any of the carbon capture, any questions, they'll come to the lectern to answer any questions you may have. So I'd like to start off, just by letting you know, we tried to have a similar meeting with key stakeholders and all of you and community members last spring. We were over at the Paisley, we had set up a meeting, I think for April, and then, of course, everyone knows that COVID hit, and we tried to reschedule for May to meet with all of you and speak with you, and again, a lot of things were canceled. So this is the first time we're joining you, and I cannot tell you how pleased we are to be with you, and I also want to say this, it's the first time I've spoken to a member, to a collective elected group in a year, so it is so good to be with you, and I was glad to be on the road from Cheyenne today, especially with the roads that are cleared up. Joining us by phone is Rick Link, and Rick oversees our Integrated Resource Plan projects that are filed every two years by utility companies. He'll take you through the process and the reason that utilities like ours develop integrated resource plans, the purpose and the importance of those plans, he'll walk us through as soon as we get the PowerPoint connected. A bit more background about the Integrated Resource Plan that Rick Link will be walking you through, some of you may remember back in 2019 was the last Integrated Resource Plan that was filed with the Public Service Commission for review and guidance and approval, and Rick will be discussing the plan to present the next Integrated Resource Plan around September of this year. And that PRAM really projects our intent and our investment, investment and infrastructure planning for, out about 10 years. As many of you know, it takes quite a while to build a transmission line. Our Gateway South, our Gateway West Transmission Line that we're constructing, it took 12 years from paperwork to where it is today. So you can imagine the amount of time and effort that our teams have put in to building this infrastructure to make sure that we can not only supply Wyoming with reliable, safe electricity, but the region overall. How are we doing on the PowerPoint? Okay. So Councilmembers and Mayor, we did provide you with a printout of the PowerPoint, so if we can't get this connected, we do have Rick Link joining us on the phone on our Microsoft Teams, and we can walk you through it if we're not able to pull it up. There we go. So Rick, we do have the PowerPoint up, are you able to hear us and join us?
Is he still on? Yeah, hello, Sharon, can you hear me? I can, I can't hear you, and I am on.
Great, thank you, Rick, we are on Slide 1, if you'd like to begin.
It is, it is a little difficult to hear, did you say we're ready to begin?
Yes, please, we're on Slide 1.
All right, so I'm going to perhaps start with a slide that is labeled overview, and really use this slide as a vehicle to walk through, as Sharon noted, our Integrated Resource Plan process. And first and foremost, for everyone's benefit, it is certainly a process. And a couple of highlights here as I walk through. Sharon, I just want to do a quick check to see, you're getting the same feedback on your end that I have on mine. If we're doing it through speaker, it might be a delay of sorts, but I'm hearing myself about, as loud as I'm speaking, about four seconds after I speak.
You don't have, do you have our YouTube livestream up?
Um, no, but I...
Okay, well, that's, I was just making sure that wasn't feedback, but no, we don't have any feedback on our end.
Okay, so if you hear me stumbling, just so you're aware, it's because I'm hearing myself speak about the same thing I just said a few minutes, oh, sorry, a few seconds before I said it. So we have been producing an IRP, Integrated Resource Plan, for really over two decades at the company, and the most basic way to perhaps understand what the IRP is, is really about, in its most simple form, it's intended to answer the questions of what kind of resources might we need to plan on adding to our system, when should we think about adding those resources to the system, where might they be located, and how much of it should we add to the system? So really, just a few basic questions. We look at that from a cost and risk point of view, importantly, from our customers' perspective, and it's not focused on shareholders or the owners of the company, it really is about finding the least cost and least risk way to answer those basic questions over 20-year planning horizon from the point of view of our retail customers. I would note that, perhaps I think many folks know, but I'm never certain, we, we do have two sort of balancing areas on our system, but we operate our east and west side of the system as a single platform, and we plan the same way, so our planning lines up with our operation. Meaning, another way to say this is, we do not prepare a separate Integrated Resource Plan for our customers in Wyoming that differs from the plan of our system in Utah, Idaho, or Washington for, for that matter. It's one plan for one system, so the IRP we file in Wyoming with the Wyoming Commission is the same IRP we file in our other jurisdictions. I noted we have a 20-year forecast period. Traditionally, this is on a two-year cycle, and then we do updates in the off year of that two-year cycle, and so it is constantly, there is something going on related to the IRP process at all times, and really in perpetuity. Looking at the graphic to the right, just to give you a sense of the basic steps, the first thing we do when we kick off an IRP cycle is we initiate a public process, and so the IRP is in fact done in a public forum. We have a lot of stakeholders that certainly pre-pandemic participate in our, in our IRP in a number of ways during the public process. We have meetings when we kick this effort off, usually about one to two days every month or so, before we make our filings and complete our work. There are in-person meetings in Portland, Oregon, and in Salt Lake City, they're linked with video conference capabilities, and also onsite places for folks to go in Cheyenne, and also in Denver in more recent years as well, and of course, folks can participate also by phone. Over the last year or so, most of the meetings, if not all of them, but I recall for the earliest, have been done virtually. Just to give you a bit of a flavor of what is involved in the public process, you know, in our last IRP cycle, I think we ended up having 19 separate meetings. At any given meeting, we can cover a number of topics, they usually are quite technical, we're walking through what assumptions we're making, the types of analyses we're performing, getting feedback from groups, but there's, I would say, anywhere from 20 to 50 different groups usually represented at these meetings, and at times, you know, upwards, well north of 100 people participating from those various locations or by phone that I walked through. In the last IRP cycle, I certainly recall a handful of meetings where there's no doubt, I'm pretty sure we broke the 200 or plus threshold in terms of number of people participating. We view that public process as being very valuable, it's a way for our customers and our customer groups to have a say in this planning process, to persuade us or drive us to at least evaluate or look at certain things, certain assumptions we might want to make, certain scenarios we might want to evaluate, to comment and opine, and drive the direction of where our assumptions might be, what are the correct assumptions to make going forward. So it's hugely important, and there's no doubt it makes the final product better than it otherwise would be. As we're going through that process, I made some comments around assumptions modeling and analysis. Really, I think it's also, I think, important and useful to understand that, as you might imagine, it, it takes a large volume of assumptions and data to try to forecast how we're going to reliably and cost-effectively meet our load on an hourly basis over the next 20 years. Lots of scenarios, we need to know what our load forecast looks like, market prices for natural gas, electricity, which might support sales or purchases, what it might cost to build new resources of all types across our system, and I could go on and on. It's a huge data set and a ton of work, and that's usually is of this process, and we're working through our stakeholder groups and the public to walk through those assumptions we're making, why, and get feedback on, and input on those. Eventually, we have to lock in those assumptions and do some modeling, and really, the modeling is about different ways to answer those questions I commented on earlier, the what should we add, when should we add it, where, and how much, we come up with any number of different ways to do that. You know, certainly technically, there's theoretically an infinite number of ways to do that, we certainly don't go quite that far or close to it, but in the last IRP, to give you a flavor, we produced well over 100 different combinations of resources that, in all, each one of them could reliably serve our customers going forward, they have to meet that threshold to meet our minimum reliability requirements. Once we've established that, there were 100 different ways to answer those questions that we produced and evaluated on cost and risk basis. We go through a process then, looking at what those costs and risks look like, to the various combinations of things we might want to do, and we ultimately screen out those that are the higher cost or higher risk, through a screening and selection process that lands us with what we call the preferred portfolio, which is the least cost, least risk plan, combination of resources, and an associated action plan to accompany that, which that's for focusing on the newer term, the next two to four-year window, the things that we will then do to deliver the types of outcomes in that preferred portfolio. Once we've established that, through that public input process and gotten feedback along the way, we ultimately make a filing with our state commissions, I noted we do that same filing in every jurisdiction in terms of content, and then that kicks off yet another process still tied to the IRP, where stakeholders, the public, interested parties and groups can participate in the commission's review of that IRP, and again, usually go through a process to make comments to the commission, hear public meetings around issues or concerns that folks may or may not have through, through the process, that's what's labeled on the circular chart as regulatory review, and once that is, is completed, I mentioned briefly that we do an IRP update in those off years, and so we make those filings in what usually ends up being the even number of years of the update, and the odd number of years of the years where we're filing the full-blown IRP informed by that public process. So Sharon, I'm going to quickly move to the next slide, it's titled 2021 IRP Status. It's titled 2021 IRP Status. Just to touch on a couple of things here to give you a sense of where we are in the current planning cycle, we began the public process, the stakeholder process, in January of 2020, last year. At that time, a series of technical workshops were held. We were focused on a keen topic of energy efficiency, primarily because we need to work through what those assumptions might look like well in advance of getting into the analytics and modeling work I just described. We had broader topics, public input meetings that began in June of last year, all kinds of topics thus far, but we were talking, we've had discussions around the planning environment that just gets to what do the markets look like, what do our load forecasts look like, what environment are we trying to make sure we're operating in to capture those elements correctly? Talk through the methodology we're adopting, walking through all kinds of inputs, assumptions, and technical analyses that we need to establish before we really begin creating those portfolios, those scenarios. We began transitioning to a new modeling system in summer of last year, so about the time we kicked off the public process, and pretty excited about that transition. It's a tool that will give us a lot, we're hoping, more capability and ability to more granularly evaluate these planning futures. We've had some hiccups with it along the way, and so at this point, we're planning to file, as I think Sharon noted, our opening remarks, the 21 IRP no later than September 1st of this year. So we're right on the cusp of beginning to work through creating those portfolios, answering those questions. But as we sit here today, we don't have any of them yet produced that we've shared with our stakeholders. So the outcomes of the 21 IRP are yet to be determined. Quickly on the next slide, I'm really not going to walk through the specifics titled Additional Information and Next Steps, but I do want to make sure you're aware of the various avenues you can use to participate in the IRP. We've got the presentations that are on our website dating back through this current cycle, and you can click on or go to that link to find all of them. We have the next meeting coming up next month through our stakeholder process. You can find information on our website there around how to participate. We have feedback forms you can download from our planning website. It's yet another opportunity for the public to provide his comments. If you can't make a meeting or you have a question about some materials that might be out there, you can submit those to us electronically through the forms on our website. And if you have any desire to be on an email distribution list that will let you know kind of where we are in current events, the status of meetings, reminders that meetings are coming up, agenda items that we're anticipating for those meetings, all of the communications we do through our stakeholder list, we try to do through that IRP distribution list. So you can always send an email to that, and we are watching it, and we'll get you added if you'd like to be added. The next slide titled Upcoming Public Input Meeting Schedule, really one a month, generally speaking here, right up through the end of August to early September when we plan to file, anticipate that many of them, as noted here, will likely be kind of two-days sessions. So they're pretty long. We cover a lot of ground in those days, but there is a lot of interest and a lot to talk about. I think on the IRP front, that ends my prepared remarks in terms of slides, and so I'll turn it back to you, Sharon.
Great, thank you, Rick, and mayor and council members. Rick will remain on the line if there's any additional questions you guys have, or if any of the members of the audience today have any additional questions, he'll stick with us through the end. On the next slide, we'd like to run through, take a few moments, to provide an overview of Rocky Mountain Power's commitment to Wyoming communities and workforce. We'd like to start out with recognizing that our company understands that coal is a very important part of Wyoming's history and economy, and will remain so. As you know, there's tremendous amount of research that the state is undertaking, dedicating resources at the state level as well as the federal level, to take a look at opportunities for clean coal technologies. So we embrace those discussions and those technologies when they apply and can be used at the industrial level. So we are having those conversations. We are also working with impacted communities. I'd like to provide you a quick overview of what we're doing with Kemmerer, Wyoming, and also Sweetwater County. So Kemmerer, Wyoming is the home of our Naughton Power Plant, and it is also projected to transition several years out. But what they've done, their community, applied for the Economic Development Administration's Diversification Grant. So Rocky Mountain Power provided $50,000, the Wyoming Governor's Office provided $50,000, and the Wyoming Business Council provided $50,000 in matching grants to that community to apply for funds, federal funds, to go through an economic diversification study, and not only the study, but develop a roadmap for diversification for that community and fund executing that plan. So Kemmerer received about $297,000 overall, and their economic development consultant will be landing on the ground this spring to walk them through how they're going to plan to diversify that economy, if and when Naughton transitions. So it's important for communities like Glen Rock, Rock Springs, and Kemmerer to truly take advantage of opportunities now as the projected transitions take place. I became a certified economic developer to help communities like Glen Rock, so please, I'm happy to be seen as a loaned executive to your economic development group to walk you through grant opportunities and identifying diversification through this process. I'll leave my card with you and look forward to working with your team. In Rock Springs, the Sweetwater County Economic Development Group there identified that, as many of us know in economic development, websites truly are a selling point for your community. So we provided $10,000 just last month to help them to develop a new website, an economic development diversification website that they have guaranteed us will include a job link for any transitioning employees, and also links for workforce and training opportunities and education opportunities. So again, something to evaluate with your Glen Rock Economic Development Group. When we're working with coal employees through the transition, there's a couple of really interesting things that the company is putting forth, opportunities for any of the impacted work team members. One are retirements or early retirements, those that qualify will have that opportunity to retire. Next, retraining and relocation. Any of our team members that would like to retrain for a similar position or a different position within Pacificor will be provided that opportunity and relocation paid. We're working with our union groups to identify those opportunities and make sure that the team members are well aware that that is available. And then finally, something interesting I found was the tuition reimbursement. Our senior leadership said, "We have employees that may want to do something entirely different." So if you want to go to college, if you want to take on different type of training, we will reimburse any employee or team member that's impacted by the transition, reimburse them for any additional education they'd like to take part in. One of our visits in Naughton, one of our team members said, "What if I'd like to be a dental hygienist?" And our vice president said, "We'll take care of that." So there is that reimbursement available to any team member that might want to transition to a different type of career. And then finally, hiring priority. Any team member that would like to take advantage or apply for a current position that's open within Pacificor receives a hiring priority and interview priority. We had one of our members, Jim Bridger, is now Regional Business Manager, and another one has now taken a position as a support person at our main office. So there are opportunities that remain available. We want to let everyone know that our mission truly is 0% job loss. Can we get there? We certainly hope so. But through these really unique opportunities, we are really hoping to have a 0% job loss related to any transition that takes place. And those are the, really, the basic information we have right now until, as Rick had mentioned, we have more information that comes out through the modeling process. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and Jim and Allen are here as well, so please let us know, and really appreciate you allowing us this opportunity to be with you tonight. Thank you.
Oh, ma'am?
Yes?
At this time, do you have any idea about the possibility of the closure of the Dave Johnston Power Plant here in Glen Rock?
Yes, council member, and we'll have Jim Bolinger address that date.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we currently are driving to the latest and greatest IRP that we have. The current IRP has all four units closing in 2027. But as you've heard tonight, we have a new IRP that's coming out in September. It could be different, or it could be the same.
Do you know where the?
She asked me?
Yeah. Do you know where the public meetings are going to be held?
I do not. Sharon, do you know?
Yeah. So the public meetings, as Rick had mentioned, are virtual, but they are also offered onsite depending on what the COVID, you know, our situation is. So as you mentioned, we do have sometimes onsite locations in Salt Lake, in Denver, and in Cheyenne, some locations there. The information is available on the website, and we would encourage you to sign up for those notifications, and they'll have that list. And I would also like to address the question from the member of the chamber about the potential for any change. Rick, could you let us know, do we think with the new modeling and the information coming out in September, could there potentially be a change to the closing dates for Naughton?
Was it for Naughton? Is that the question? Just to make sure I heard that correct.
I'm sorry, for Dave Johnston.
And I can't hear if you're...
Yeah, if there, with the IRP, the new modeling, could there be a potential change to any dates for Dave Johnston? Sorry.
So we're evaluating cases and scenarios that explore different retirement dates that are also exploring the potential for carbon capture, retrofits to, at least I think, one Dave Johnston facility or one unit. So we don't know the answers to those today. As I mentioned earlier, we don't yet have our models producing those portfolios. Those are the things that answer that question, though, but when, where, and how much. As those start to be produced, you know, we've got one scheduled here for April in terms of a public meeting. I don't think we're going to be quite ready at that time. I think anything after June is where we're more likely to start seeing some initial modeling results. And one thing that is important to have context, as those things start to roll out, you know, we're not done until we done, so preliminary results, draft results that come with caveats, those sort of things, just be aware that all of that is still subject to change until the complete body of work is finalized in August before we make our final filing in September. That's part of what comes, I think, with a public input process, is when you're making updates in a public forum, you know, just be wary that those things can sometimes catch a life of their own, and if you've got questions, you know, as those things start to roll out, feel free to reach out to us in any number of forums, either through Sharon or through those IRP electronic avenues, and we'll do our damnedest to respond and answer your questions.
Any other questions for this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and coming and speaking to us. Our next order of business is bills and claims. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion and we pay our bills.
Motion is there, second?
I'll second that.
There's neck over there. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Haven't we not paid to over-engineer that town square?
What's that?
Haven't we not paid to over-engineer that town square? It's another $21,000 bill for the town square. Are we not done with that?
No, we're not done with that. That's moving forward. That was part of the change stuff because we doubled the size of it and...
Gotcha.
Everything else had to go into it.
Glen Rock T-13.
That's the transmission pipeline?
Okay.
Cost of new engineering transmission back to the wells.
And the blanket engineering that says engineering. CD.
That's various small projects being worked on with different departments.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the executive session that we voted on and put in?
Mr. Chairman, before we go to that point, we had a request by the Chief of Police tonight to be granted a public hearing as is designated by this law. Do we need to act on that request and grant that?
I don't believe what we've done this evening was there was anything discussed about actions for or against him. Was there?
So therefore?
There's no need to have a public discussion of it this time.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to go back into executive session, or are you satisfied?
Somebody already made a motion?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion and we go into special session.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Litigation.
Litigation.
Yeah, I'm going litigation.
Any other discussion? None, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? Motion carries. Adjourn to executive session. I don't know how long this will be. You're more than welcome to go home or sit here if you'd like. We'll be back out in a while.
There you go, bills are paid.
Yeah, fancy stamping.
Oh, Kelly, you are so slow.
Is it waterproof?
Mine smells like...
I'm not sure. I haven't... For Bruce. Well, we'll find out. It has a keyboard that I can screw up.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. That smells good, doesn't it?
I didn't mind a little shot of that Merlot.
I don't know what the...
Because I could get hammered with Merlot.
I think I've ruined a few Christmases that way. At our poker games. The blackberry Merlot. You guys want a shot? You can have one.
I can give her a ride home if we need to. Margaret, if you need, I can give you a ride home.
Unlock.
No, I'll take you right straight to you. Give that to you. No, I would not do that to you.
All because of the weather.
This snow, this snow is probably the worst snow. Fifty something years. Yeah. But it just, you know, wouldn't amount to much. Total damage, no frost, rain first, water. I mean, the snow was literally- Can you really show me that whole, that snow standard right there? They have no frost. So, it's going to get on this pass, you know, you will get this great saturation. And we went from seventy percent snow back in the month of Saturday, to a hundred and forty percent. Oh, yeah, it's fun to live here. So, you know, we-
That would be the first one.
That is spoiled. So, she has-
We have no spoiled animals around.
She has this problem, she has this, has this, uh, being washed. And then she'll wait in the pantry. Until I come home, and she, since I get home, she goes and jumps in the tub, on her feet, and this is how spoiled the tub is. Sometimes there's, I'd say, when you go to bed, she'll, she'll stay in the tub. So, so once, so we've been looking at her, uh, with her penis, but, um, once she realized that- And she doesn't, she doesn't, she doesn't- Another thing, we started with, she's not, right? So now she sits in the front of the line, feet over on my arms, and I'll sit here watching TV in her front door. It's like a whole, my wife's hand. And my wife sits over on the couch and looks at me to tell her stuff. No, both of them, really. Both of them are, yeah.
All equal then, you're going to get serious, Joe.
You don't have a preference. And so Bella's, uh, saying, have you seen Bella? Have you seen Bella? And, oh, Sam, nothing, because we like pepper. Oh, really? And having Bella is, she has no respect for your personal space. You're sitting in a chair, she's behind your chair.
Your chair, so?
Osama said, thank you. Oh, yeah, I don't think so. You have salmonella, I don't have salmonella.
Yeah, we know, we know how that is spoiled little-
You know, I hope I'm sure of my decision.
Oh, oh, well, there's no sense to the essence of that.
So, Judy and Mike are going to Buffalo, we just got, uh, a lab. And Mike tells me, so, let's go all the way to Sheraton and meet. Before we were going to meet her, and Judy says, Frau, we, we need to go with a clear. And Mike says, uh, why? So, then they go over to Cheryl, and they invite her. Yes, yes. So, then, like the next night, I go look for Cheryl. And I get home, not bad, right? Judy says, we gotta go, or she'll- No. Nobody knows. For what, the queen? But I would do that. So, sure.
Yeah, if you're saying we're not, sure.
I don't, I can't remember. I mean, honestly, but we leave out that one, we see that. See, that was her.
They're just like, you're scared.
That was, that was not the end.
Okay, you're showing us your, my- Oh, no, it's okay.
Everyone, my, every student, every teacher, they have never had dogs, so. And, uh-
Oh, my gosh.
My mind is like a mouth, and once, but-
She says they can't exist in the world.
But, uh, she stayed two and a half days. And we brought her home, and she got another breed. Move forward. Equal brothers, there is no equal bond, and we don't get, we don't correspond to a group like somebody in C S U. And her neurologist is like, they didn't ever have the Sheila and I, her neurologist. She, she calls and checks on her all the time, and it's funny, I mean, it's like, if this is a dog, it just- Choice. The choice, yeah. Character.
So, the whole bridge, the dog that was at the Christmas. Home center Christmas, stop, thing that we did for the Christmas, Jack looked where it is. This is, he actually came back here, he had two, and some of the, and I was in Florida, and he said he-
Oh, man, I'm going to overcome.
Right?
What should be that? Have a great evening. You told the shop or what?
Yes, so I was going to ask you, if you have any, um, or if you- Oh, in who? Oh, boy, yeah. That would be awesome. Because I, I would love that, because I'm, I'll be the second one to meet the accident. Yeah, like that would be perfect, if I could just grab the stuff, um, for that. Yeah, right. And we need to. Yeah, that's what we work up to a whole time, right? Work up to. There's a crisis like it's, you're either in trouble or you're. Right, so there's part of you that you call a liability for bringing up this career.
She named. Door.
Door. Never seen. Jesus, I told Bob I'd be home early. Oh, jeez, I'm tired of presenting.
Can we have a motion to close the executive session?
I make a motion. We close the executive session.
I'll second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion? Bring no discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion for the meeting.
Motion is or seconded?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Bring no discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Being adjourned. I have not received a phone call. Still.
No.
Okay.
No.
See what you find out.
No problem. Call them right away.
No.
Not tell me what I need to pay to go get a judge. Jeez, you little walking germ. I just play in the dirt and shit. I never wash my hands, so I don't catch nothing. I washed my hands before I go to the bathroom. What do you mean? The job I got. I know where my hands are again.